Hello. What's your reason to make it better? So I'm gonna go both. Uh, the people from the community access that you chat, so they can remember names, so I'll look at her name. But she had, if they were all gonna be. Any heavy size, they're all gonna be um. In person where we're gonna record them, so they'll be found following. So I talked to you to see what uh. If we ever disorder anything. This is me not knowing that I actually use this thing. Is that the uh? Audio? Yes. Yeah, she was like. I don't know how it's turning up. All our uh. Get me to turn on. By the way, I said get me to turn on. You mean I can't? Alright, well, we're recording it on the air, so hopefully that will be good enough. Let's see, two, four, five, I think it's twenty, yeah. Yeah, probably. Rod, no, Rod, tonight, Rod, you know, I told you earlier the weekend and it's three, four, and team gets to see him there, but. Yeah, I mean, you get to hear one man. The last player called there, but it's not. Well, we can file a single. Some of them will, but it seems to be three kilos, two. Yeah, but I mean. Are we actually recording that? Okay, I guess that being okay, so we won't have Lyndon tonight and we won't have Rod, so we can go ahead and start the call this meeting. The order and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, the stand, the foundation. Is this all liberation goes to. Thank you. So this is the uh. Over twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, Board of Finance meeting, regular meeting. Uh, we have our agenda in front of us, uh. First thing would be public speak, but we do not appear to have any members of the public here, so we will move on to addition for event item three, needs of changes and additions to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda?
You said we were gonna strike number four, right?
So well, we'll just continue because, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we can, so we need to change it, or we can just skip over.
Okay. Nothing to add.
Okay, hearing none, and we'll uh, I've done the four, so yeah, so the. Uh, we didn't get the auditor set up at this meeting, but you know, if you're talking with Eric, I think it's actually a better op idea to have it here. Have the auditor uh at the November meeting, if possible, that way you'll have at least one board member then. And they can listen in and participate and kind of get a feel for what the issues are. So. I don't have too much concern about that. Okay, move on to agenda item five, which is whole business, the review of the budget actual. There it is, it's a dumb, but it's really, really, but. There is the uh, budget action thing, right? Everybody said time to work over this, if they have any concerns. Please put the end. Eric, are you aware of anything to be watching?
No, we're gonna be doing okay at this point, where there's nothing really major. That, I mean, there's a few things that are over, but there's nothing really big enough to be a significant concern.
Any questions or? We've got a few more messages here. Okay. This is what we're getting at, we did get a check right into this meeting. That I saw. Um, so assuming no problems there. So update on the A E S parking lot paving project, Eric, I don't know if any cases last meeting, we had, you had given us an update and the sort of contract here, where it's not able to do it in this season, and then you're gonna look at continuing next.
Correct, that's still the case. Um, as I said to the Board of Finance last meeting. Um, at some point, Board of Finance. It was essentially waiting to bundle things to make that happen. Um, you know, in a time crunch. If we're not in a time crunch, then the question comes back to the board. Do you want to revisit putting out an actual RFP for this? Or do you wanna just continue with the contractor at A E S that already lined up for the project? Um, since we would have time now to go to RFP for this, if you wanted to go through the normal purchasing. You know, uh, first danger. So that would be the only question I'd have for you as a board on that, or maybe you don't wanna make, maybe you were waiting for the new board to make that decision, or maybe you wanna make that note of that. That would be one, and the second thing is the Board of Selectmen did authorize. Essentially, a temporary fix of the upper parking lot. Um, by doing a combination of things, one is bringing in contracted new crack ceiling. Um, and then bring that same contractor and both different equipment. Um, to do what's called mastic ceiling, which they're very similar products. Um, mastic just deals with much bigger gaps. So the, the goal is basically to make the upper parking lots, so the board that feels that it's safe and they can reopen that before winter, um, we start getting in ice and territory. Number one, uh, but because of the nature of the contractors, those contractors basically work on. I mean, the, the, the price you pay is essentially per gallon of material applied, but the contractors essentially work in one day increments. Um, and that's because the only two big contractors doing this, you know, one of them comes from the little west of Albany, and the other one comes from uh Quincy, Mass. So they're not coming in for a couple hours, they're coming in, they'll bring crews in for the day. Uh, so what we're going to do is we're gonna do the upper parking lot, the lower parking lot at A E S. And probably some of the town hall, our regards parking lot, basically go as far as we can get. You know, one full day work for both of them, so we kind of maximize what we're getting out of the deal. Um, so it was definitely more expensive than I wanted to pay just with the upper lot, but probably a third or half of the total cost will be the upper lot and the rest. Will basically be invested in the lower lot and the town parking lot. Uh, cause they only serve two, so.
Okay.
Uh, ballpark, it's gonna be in the low twenties, you know, and again, you know, we're. We're going off the capital regional council government's, you know, uh, RFP, so it's kind of a set, uh. Per unit cost, but until we know exactly how many, you know, gallons they're gonna put down, we will have an exact cost, so it might be a little lower than that, might be a little higher than that.
When you say it's a quick fix, is that something that will have to be redone? When they actually do the front lot? Looked at again, or is it gonna be good for them?
Well, when we do the upper lot, everything that we're putting down there that was gonna get browned up and put into the base anyway, so. That will essentially be starting with a clean slate, so the money we put into that should be thought of as essentially a one year credit. Um, it's not gonna have any lasting value past the next year. Uh, with the lower lot in the town parking lot. You know. I would not have anticipated doing significant work in either of those lots in the next couple of years. So I think that is kind of a band-aid to push the plot from home. You know. You know, in any parket or any paving, you know, you have essentially long-term fixes and you have short-term fixes. And the goal is to spend the least amount of money for the longest period of time and still have an acceptable service. In a lot of cases, it's far more economical. To do lower costs, but shorter term fixes, like when we chip the ceiling really. That's not something that lasts forty years, um, but it's cheap and you can afford to do it every seven years. And that's still a lot cheaper than, you know, repaving every twelve or every fifteen. So, um, crack ceiling and mastic ceiling, you know, were both fairly low cost, fairly high payoff, kind of ongoing maintenance things. So, I mean, we regularly spend forty, fifty thousand dollars a year crack ceiling downwards to extend their lives.
Like you said, the Board of Selectmen had offered this, had anything been decided, or it's still? I know we talked about the, whatever the, the check that was cut for the original contractor doing the upper lot and that work. Um, so are we saying this has been decided that they want to do the band-aid fix, like you said?
Yes.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen authorized it at the last meeting.
And that's what I, I, I think I was a little bit, at our joint meeting, I didn't know if it had been agreed on or not.
It had not been.
Oh, okay, good. I knew there was stuff in the.
Yeah, Board of Selectmen. Or actually. I forgot now, who came first.
Well, I know, I probably Board of uh, Board of Selectmen, and then the twelfth was the. It was only one meeting, there was a bunch of meetings in one week, cause I went, yeah, B O S, B O eight, and then our joint on the Thursday. And then just a follow-up. I'm not the deciding factor, but you said, when choosing a contractor for the big job that's going to get done, you know, eventually. Are you, well, I too, it's too proud, it'll be quick. If we do the band-aid, are we putting off? The band-aid will hold for a couple of years now, and we won't do the bigger job to the upper parking lot?
No, I think that needs to stop.
Uh, I, the intention is still to reclaim the upper parking lot.
Okay, good.
Sometime during next paving.
Good.
Now, my s-.
And I have a second part, but, but.
Would be the smarter way to do that would be to do that after school actually gets out.
Oh, so that, it would last, right?
June or July project.
Oh, okay.
My preferred solution at this point.
Gotcha. And because you raised the point of going to RFP, or. I feel like in good faith, in my opinion, after that last meeting, since we went through this whole thing and everybody's kind of approved the contractor that the board event did select. I would not wanna. Wanna go back, I'm not the deciding factor, in my opinion, I would be okay with keeping everything as is with the contractor they selected, with everyone having decided on the Board of Selectmen. Us, you know, with all the stipulations that the town had brought forth. Just my opinion, I think it would do a lot for.
Relations?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
And I, I mean, I want the work to be good and all of that, obviously, it's gonna have a deep respect of when the town had.
My own.
Yeah. I really think that would do a lot of what we're trying.
Um, so.
Always a question. Oh, I thought the school paid a lot, so I thought they hold this contractor for many years, so I'm wondering, and Eric's saying, no, the town pays for. All of them.
Um, so that law hasn't been paved in probably twenty-five years.
Has it been covered?
Yeah, we. Um, they may be doing the ceiling, um, although honestly, I'm not. The type of ceiling we're doing, I'm not convinced there's enough benefit to, to pay the cost, I think it's more cosmetic than bone drill. Um, there is some benefit to ceiling, but I think we waited too long. You know, it, earlier in the life of pavement, it's, it's efficient to seal because you restore some of the. You know, the shorter uh height of apartments, which evaporate more, and you can restore them in a different way, you can prevent cracking. And shrinkage and a lot of the things, once you have a. You know, twenty-something year old room. You're not really, you know, chip ceiling will extend it a little bit, but just simply frog coating it. Doesn't add a ton of, ton of damage, makes it look pretty, makes it look nice and white, um, but I'm not sure it's really. So we've kind of got to leave from that in the town's lots.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just because I don't think the cost benefits there, you know. But as far as paving contractors, no, to my knowledge, the town hasn't used Constantine before, I mean, we know about it.
Gotcha.
You know, we've seen the drive-in where they do proper people. Um, they're a, a contractor with a pretty good reputation, so I would like hesitate to use that, I don't find it needs. But we don't have any personal.
So. I just wanted to be, in your opinion, though, Eric, is there? You think there's money to be added if you do RFP, or in your opinion, you just see the price that they're paying, which is for the sake of?
Cause I'm very early.
Fixing wounds to feed that as its, or do they need a chance of it being paid in money by the way?
I don't think you're gonna save significant money. Um, because their, their cost per, per ton, per asphalt, um.
Probably not the same volume.
You know, yeah, so, so they're basically, that came off the profit, so truly all the incidental costs that may change from contractor to contractor. So in this case, I don't think you're gonna be saving a ton of money. By going to another, if you keep the specifications the same among all contractors. You're probably not gonna see a huge difference in price, but having said that, I mean. You know, the last time we reclaimed and repaved the road, there was, you know, we got like six bids back. And the difference between the highest and lowest was basically doubled, so.
Wow.
There was a huge difference in cost, but I would say for that lot, the costs seem about right, that would be roughly what I would expect I'd pay for.
Yeah, who knows, so, but a lot of that has to do with equivalent competition that they use, and it's almost on labor, that's a rather, I'm not content with that for every time, but it's, but. Fair enough.
So did they commit to it in the?
I'm sure that our units inspired, really, completely from that, it's inspired it.
Yes.
Okay, you go off, I haven't been in spring. Quite a few changes.
Well, so. I'm sure there will be somewhat of a price change in that, number one. And number two, all these contracts, including the one we had with Constantine, has an asphalt ex. Uh, escalation, uh, quads in it. Because these guys get burned sometimes when the cost of liquid asphalt goes up, cause that's a really significant total fraction of their job. And it also kind of fits scale with the cost of diesel, so when, you know, the price of weather goes to the root. Um, you know, the cost of jobs automatically increases, and that is built into the contract. Um, so you always have to be wary when you're signing these things, knowing. You know, what the actual cost of liquid asphalt is, to make sure that the number you're signing, looking at on paper. Is realistic, and, and we usually look in and make sure we have at least ten percent more than that assigned to that job. Because, you know, anytime you grind stuff up, there's a chance you're gonna hit. I mean, you know, you might have light poles out there where they burn, the electrical wires too low, and you whack them when you replane, you shouldn't. But I, I mean, there's a billion things that can go wrong in this, so you always have to build in. And that, again, that is one of my concerns with them, is they were signing a contract and they, they had no contingency, they had no. You know, um, they weren't thinking along those lines. Which makes me a little embarrassed. Yeah, so it doesn't happen, but sometimes it does.
Go back to the uh, band-aid fix, so the Board of Selectmen voted to uh, proceed with that, where does something come from? It can come from that debate, or is it gonna come from the town road?
They're coming from the town road, but.
Okay.
So that'll come from the town road, it's one of the, like, part of that, so that will leave that in fact with the capital for this one, that matters. Correct, if they choose to actually, uh, have the town actually check and put it in that account, which. Their board still has not made that consideration, so we have not kept that checked out.
Okay.
Okay.
Were there questions?
These, well, I guess one question is this. Is. Do they really care about the contractor, do they care about getting the job done, and, I mean. Not that we're trying to override and take you power, but if they, they really care about the RFP, we got a better price, and just to the contractor also with qualifications, it's something that, I mean, like. It didn't get done this year, and.
That is a good point.
Hey, I just think, do they want the, the job done, or they care that we pick contractors and do it the way we want to, like? I don't, she, me, like, you get the job at the best price, and is it, it's about you, your contractor, to get the job at the best price, the best job, I don't know. And again, if I would accept them, I don't wanna be that, but if, but if I would have accepted them, the thing that happened, it should be the private, the part of, hey, the match should be the part of, not that they got to choose the contractors. Where's cooking with them, that's.
Yeah.
Kind of, so to be honest.
Yeah, and, and to be honest.
Not somebody who's been involved, right?
And to be honest. I was never, when we started this, I was never looking to run this and administer this project. And if you look at the proposal I sent you originally, for the agreement for the use of the A E S capital fund. Um, that was worded in such a way that. The A E S had to follow the correct procedure, they had to go through the RFP process, they had to go through C I P. But they kept control of, and they needed Board of Selectmen approval for their capital projects, but. You know, they, they got the London, they got, they saw it, and I still think that's. Probably appropriate, but, you know. That's, ultimately, that's not my call.
They did have a good point, though, with. If there is gonna be a capital project or, you know, done, who does? When we get to that conversation, who oversees it? You can't, you can't have it one way and that way, it makes sense if we all want the experts to be overseeing it and running it. Like a parking lot thing, or a building, you know, addition or something like that, we would want the experts to be overseeing it. And does, and, and Valerie did make a valid point that time, like. Who would be, like she said, what is, she used the word, which is great, cause I see it in schools all the time, too. Um, we have workers like going through the hallways and everything, and I'll call, like our building and maintenance department, say, were they supposed to be here? You know, doing this, like, so just the overseeing it question that you've said, and. If we want it done a certain way, and we're gonna have them follow certain rules, then. I don't mean to add more to your plate or whoever oversees projects, but the inspection wise or whatever, that's all my thoughts is. Is that what you were thinking, too?
Well, I was going into this thinking that the school was gonna quote unquote. Run the project. You know, and deal with the contractor, and the town would essentially supply the, the, you know, we supplied the specifications, number one.
Right.
We supplied the inspectors. Uh, both for, you know, quality control for compaction as well as on-site. To make sure they're giving us the correct thickness, and then the nuclear density testing for the asphalt itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we would have had to do the backfilling behind the curb, cause they had never, they didn't build that into the price to begin.
Gotcha, that's the word, the oversight of those things that you just mentioned, right, making sure they're correct. Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's possible that within the school community. They have the technical knowledge to do that, I mean, the town is a town engineer, that's. You know, for that reason, because some of these things, I know a lot, but. I don't know a lot, too, so. So I always hand it off to somebody who knows more than me, and it comes down to the actual monetary of that.
I, I think that one thing to consider would be, uh, cause this is just even fun. Um, that the review and approval of any project should probably have some kind of problem plan. That it'll identify who would be the primary manager, where would the expertise be gone, et cetera, that kind of thing. So if we keep that in mind, that, hey, if you come to us. Uh, with, and this could be any town apartment, it could be whatever, if you come to us for a request, a major expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're gonna kind of know, okay, how long is this gonna take, who's gonna do the oversight, how are we gonna finance it, who's gonna, you know, do the inspection, who's gonna do the day-to-day outside? You know, in town, it's eighty percent of that's gonna probably be Eric or Jay or somebody like that, like. So, but, but that would be a way to clarify that, of course, cause I, I do think that, you know, in, in a lot of these things that the school might be undertaking. It, it really, unless they ask for assistance, it probably should be, I meant to manage the project, but for us to, you know, insist on and make sure that there's a level of expertise, uh, for the oversight, for the, uh, for the. Sign-offs, if you will, and, you know, I think that that's a reasonable approach, but.
That's.
You know, if they say, hey, this is kind of really out of a wheelhouse, could we, could we enlist some of these, some of the town's resources to do that, and certainly that would be. Uh, a, a welcome suggestion in that case, and be. I think one way you would keep that.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, honestly, I'm not looking for more projects managed, I'm gonna be holding on with you.
Right, understood, that's very.
Successful.
Right.
Getting grant funding, I'm sitting on way more projects that I can manage, and. You know, and it's problematic right now, and I'm, and I'm admitting that, so I don't wanna, I'm not looking to manage any of their projects in particular.
I'll save that for ultimate discussion, but I do have a point on that, too, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about that, we do have a lot going on. And there's not a, you know, another small town, you know, maybe, yeah, but I'll wait.
I just don't understand why it got to this point where the town, where the school's expecting the town to handle it all. If it's a school's project, isn't it their priority and their responsibility to oversee it?
It wasn't that, like, cause I kind of, if you don't mind just for a second, she, that brought up a valid point, like, she didn't expect it, like. She was, she brought up a point, like, if we are doing capital projects, who will have oversight, or kind of like a discussion. She wasn't pushing it off, but it does make sense, like, being in a school. Uh, people come to me always, and, hey, can you sign up on this, or this or that?
Hmm.
And I'm not, I'm not saying maybe, maybe, probably my superiors, but we know where to go for the people that will sign up on those things, because. Obviously, I'm in a school that's part of a town, that's having a project done there. But we can manage the day, I can tell a worker where to go, I can guide a person to the other workers, you know, me being in a school, but I'm talking about like the expertise of the signing off, like.
Well, yeah, I can understand the expertise of someone doing the actual job, but you have, I mean, a lot of people go through the town for certain things, and they're overseeing their own project. You have to make sure you go to the town to get everything, you know, I think we're saying the same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah. Yeah, like, they can do, they can deal with a, a thing. Sorry, and I aired it really, yeah.
I don't think I was trying to make it to run it, don't they run other projects as well?
Uh, no.
Not common.
I don't.
Not building, not constructing.
You know, you need Eric to explain it at the meeting, you know. The people out there don't know their educators, they don't have all paid, and how had it gotten all dead? And you, we wouldn't have the right soil drainage contract, that they would just have paid. So you can't just, like, oh, that's their product, why, because they're educated, they're not paid, they're not billed, it's not. So.
Structing people.
Yeah, they don't want to cheat, you have to have people that have expertise, you know, there, so.
Yeah, so there's two possibilities, I think, one. Them hiring their own technical people, which, I mean, let's be honest, Ryan, that's a building manager. You know, whose job is to oversee, you know, capital projects and suit the knocks that building. And I don't know what he makes, but I suspect he probably makes more than I do.
Burnt.
So they're, they're well-paid individuals, but they're good at.
The budget for a minute.
Well, no, but I'm not.
I understand, I just think it's gonna, we're gonna cut. I just think it's gonna, we're gonna cut somewhere else if we do that, but we can't.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's bull.
No, no, I hear you, it's an option.
I mean, the other option is to use the same engineering firm that the town uses for a lot of it. I mean, that's that's the reason why, you know, Nathan Jacobson is on our on-call engineer. To be able to give me a set of prints for installing propane tanks behind here, cause you know, we can't do that ourselves.
Hmm.
Um, and that's fine, but. The town doesn't have the big, the engineered budget to cover our projects and their projects. So either the town has to increase its engineering. Budget in order to be covering those projects, uh, you know, the technical ones of those projects. Or the school has a budget for it separately, either. You know, hire their own engineer or or use ours with their money, and any of those three solutions are viable.
I I I I do wanna say that I think we're getting a little bit off task here.
Yeah, yeah.
Frankly, this is an archiver, it's important.
Right, right.
Uh, I think it behooves us to review a project and feel confident that the people. Who have asked for the project to go forward or as for the funding. Have a plan and they have the resource and planning to do it properly. Uh, in the same way that CIP or somebody might do as well, but I I don't. I don't wanna get into the, I don't think we should get into the.
And we're jumping away at them.
The rail is a bad particular part of that, I think that is more aligned with. Uh, the board of selection, the board of education and there.
Okay.
We don't have any, we need to see the money most spent, right, so, but from my thoughts, you know. Anything else on the. Part of that progress?
No, it's just so, it's the thing that started the conversation, like who said with the account and with the baby stuff, so that's all I, we can lock it back, I think. You know, you're right. Thank you for bringing it back and we know, well, they will decide, the people that need to decide as we go along.
Yeah.
This was just a first thing that came up that opened the door to talking about capital projects.
There may not be, there may not.
You're gonna have to save for a while before a project comes, you know, there's gonna have to be some funding done, so, thank you.
Good, well, let's go on to uh, I am six, which is new business, so this is the review of the going board meeting. Uh, so someone, Brian, you were there?
Yeah.
And Joanne was there.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Was there?
Yeah.
So some, so some of you had. Uh, were there, I was there. You weren't there, you were just. I think Rob was there, right? Yeah, so I don't know if you guys wanna, somebody else kind of. You know, two-minute summary or did we, were were decisions made, how was the, how was the?
It started negative, that's all, and then they'll jump in, and unfortunately, I think we all came together in a good. Good, well-meaning way, and then we had our public speak where. Whether it meant to or not, you know, not blaming anyone in the, uh. They, um, the board of ed had a spokesperson, I don't know him, he must be a new member. Um, had brought up some things that got kind of negative and it, and that's why I had brought up the audit. Um, talking to the auditor because they had Eric's letter that addressed the audit, so. Well, not meaning at all, it just kind of brought it on there, so we all kind of like burst over a little bit. But my two cents are overall, I'm glad it happened, maybe that's why I'm kind of being thoughtful in the way I think now. Moving ahead because of some of the things that happened at that meeting. Um, there's a lot of hurt, I, what I did sense, I don't, and whether it's, I don't know where the genesis came up. You can tell there's a lot of distrust clearly, I mean, I've been here for seventeen, eighteen years in town, watched it all and. Being a person that can appreciate another person's feelings or whether there's real facts behind it or it's just been dragged through for years. I still have to respect how certain people feel and try to move forward and make things better. And that's a couple of things that I said as the meeting was going on, again, if this happened, I'm sorry about this, but. We really do want to have a positive impact moving forward and just be collaborative and work together, so.
Were there any decisions taken, I know that Shannon and Rob were working on a joint. Kind of a joint policy document, right, so, but anything?
Because of this, like, it was the stock for them. The non-lapsing, right, we were, or the purchasing policy too, which I. Eric had given, this was the document that you had given as a draft.
Right.
Which was well-written and had some good points in it, I, is this the thing that they are working on?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
Because they were speaking on their concern. You know, in, and I'm not saying it's not a valid concern, is that when you put money in a permanent fund. You know, at the end of the day. You as the board of finance can move that money if you need to, you know. So if you had to raise any permanent fund to. You know, for whatever reason, because we had an actual disaster, we needed the money or whatever, you have the ability to do that. Uh, and that's their concern, is that they put money in this account. You know, they built a nest egg of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the board of selection and board finance, rated to. You know, fill a pick of all ones, um. You know, so in 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 that is, that is one of their big concerns and that's.
And they did voice that, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think I get that, sure.
But I think we all could have. I would not want that to happen, with everything that we've witnessed and everything in the town, there's a lot of funds that could be. I wish we did a little more to. Because they were coming around, I felt like at that point, Eric, and asked a question, I don't mind signaling just to you, cause you are you and you're gonna answer. Truthfully, and you say that, I think at that point, you're like, well, it's in a fund, it could be moved, it could be this. And it is true.
So I didn't lie to them.
I didn't want you to lie to me, not ever, I don't want, I'm very open as I'm speaking. I just wanted to say, you know what, with all that's happened, we're not, we would never touch that fund, I think that would leave but.
For your, the board makeup may be a degree different, so.
Okay.
You know, you know, there could, it it's, or like Eric said, that that was that.
Mm-hmm.
Really not gonna.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I think that the, we have to represent the town and we have to.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, you take things at face value, we've got accounts, you know, we've got a, a, you know, road funds that that money is for the roads, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's a school capital fund, that money is embedded with the school.
Mm-hmm.
And we we need to be very judicious in moving any fund, I think, cause frankly enough, the town's. Expert voted.
Right.
They voted that money for the road fund, they voted that money, you know, or like for the schools, uh, so, so we would be, I think, uh. Not appropriately presenting the county wishes if we do that willingly, so I think we would, I would open, no worries.
That's all I wanted to express was exactly that.
Yeah.
Yeah, was there a resolution?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, I did talk to Rob at at my, um, for the meeting, um, we maybe tried to pass him then, but. Um, it's just, we didn't say it, so, um, he's still recovering, so.
Sure.
But what he, what he did tell me is, is said, first of all, he said, we don't, we don't, yeah. He and Shannon were working on the policy back.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not that, he said they made a lot of progress, he said, but it would be better, he said he knows the board on, it's like to have the documents ahead of time. So you can review it, he said he didn't like, they don't really have anything that's quite ready at the time. He said that the. One of the things they did is they kind of, they, I understand this probably. He, they, uh, were taking out some of the language regarding the two percent lapse in fund, but they thought it was more important, focused just on the capital. Fund and the policy for that.
Hmm.
Um, they felt that it was important to come up with a common, uh, understood definition of what a capital project is. Which is, I agree, is important, so he wanted to attach that as a, as an aid to the policy, uh, that makes a lot of sense. So he and I talked about some of the parameters of that, like D, and I I think that there probably are some guidelines and. Governmental account policies and procedures, we generally accepted, uh, things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, generally, capital project has, it's for a physical asset. Um, it has a lifespan, it can be depreciated or considered to be depreciated, otherwise it's gonna. You need to particularly lose value over time, you know, so there, you wouldn't, you know, it's gonna have a significant value, you wouldn't do capital expenditure on it. It used to be companies would do it on a laptop, but typically don't do that anymore, the value isn't that high. Uh, but, you know, so something maybe has been a fifteen thousand dollar, we had, we had put some kind of guidelines and we think. It would be something that certainly should be considered for a capital asset, but the ten thousand dollar software license. Contract that would not be capitalizing, there's just no physical thing in there if you were here, so there's some guidelines that would need to be put in place. And they wanted to work on coming up with a commonly understood, uh, definition of what a capital project would be. Uh, the, see what else are they working at? Um. It was one of the things you you mentioned that they were, uh, other was. It's not a fun time, but I think those are the main things that they're, that they're trying to work on.
Okay.
Putting in place. Uh, he said they were, they made a lot of progress, just not quite. Very, but then hopefully they had something for next meeting, then something to do ahead.
Okay.
So.
Because it seemed like the board of ed, um. They were, the sticking point was, can we get things done quickly, or, you know, they.
Fair enough, yeah.
Well, I don't feel like we've ever paused on things, you know. I think we've reviewed things and kind of then tabled them or whatever, so I knew that's great that they are working together on it because I feel like that will. Maybe do a lot to make them feel better, once we have it done, again, and I'm just about ending, but it's, I'm like, that's all I, you know, I'm reacting, so. I'm I'm curious to see what Brian and and Bill thought about the meeting and your.
Well, it started off, I think, in a, as you say, they were a very distracting.
Mm-hmm.
At that meeting, they can probably not trust anybody, question money, uh, or that it would be stolen, it was put into an account that. It would still be a venture not moved by us to some other town. Um, but I'll start that and you figured that on track and that was the only one takeaway, it would be action that came out of that whole thing.
Right.
With Rob and. And Shannon worked on that, that one document, so it started off pretty fiery, I think, but it got that on track and I think it ended. More Hollywood.
So that's, yeah, but that's what it was, it did, it did go kind of full circle, which I think it needed to there a moment.
I think they need some, every needs to face the error. I understand the distrust, I mean, for all volunteers, trying to do what has to attack, I don't think it makes sense, you know, but, you know, but it, yeah, it was gonna be.
County board. Board events. You know. In most towns, it's a fraught relationship.
Is it?
You know, we are not an outlier in this, you know, this is a frequent conversation, you know, starter among town administrators, town managers. Um. You know, in a sense, it's. Uh. It is a question, you know, if if you're being honest, it's a question of, you know, with. Municipal finance is essentially a zero-sum game. You know, the taxpayers are only gonna give you X number of dollars, you know, you have to figure out how to divide that higher. Education is typically by far the largest single expense a town has.
Wow.
Um, in the town of Vanderbilt, it's now roughly seventy percent of the total budget. Um, which is a much better ratio than it was, cause when I first took over. You know, education was running seventy, seven, nine percent of the budget. And if you look at, the the metric I kind of look at is the number of dollars spent per taxpayer for the general government. And we just flat out weren't spending enough. Uh, we've gotten a lot better, you know, we've, we've been able to absorb some increase, but it's. There's always gonna be a tense relationship there. Uh, in my mind, the big thing that. There is still not agreement on is financial report.
Right, that is the other one that that was.
That's the one.
Yeah.
And I thought the, one of the really good things is they brought brought in, uh, Tom Mooney, um.
That was very good.
You know, who is probably not Tommy Hemlin, education lawyer in the state.
Yeah.
And I don't know, clearly. Yeah, stated, he was very open, this is an expert right here.
No, I know, and, um. I know Dennis, there is a copy of of Mooney's, uh, book on education law, because that's.
He's very well, we've, we've seen him. Yeah.
And that was excellent that they brought him in, you know. Uh, and and I think the thing that. You know, we also stated upfront, which I was happy to see is that, you know, he said. As far as the financial accounting, that. The town was not asking for anything.
Mm-hmm.
That should not be available to any citizen of the town via Freedom of Information Act request. So, but if you listen to. Where they were going, the tone of the school board members. They keep hammering on the behalf of supply the information once a year at the audit.
Hmm.
And. I mean, I look at it and say, ultimately. My job and the job of the treasurer is to keep the board of selectmen and board of finance, one of them, fully appraised. Of the finances of the town of Vanderbilt. And right now, and fortunately for us. Ram is carved out of that because regional high schools have their own separate state law. So we can, in their case, write them a check. And not worry about it because we don't have any legal authority over that, which is why they go to grant them separately to approve their budget.
Hmm.
Uh, but with the school. We are still, you are ultimately still responsible for their expenditures and their budget. And them not allowing you or me or the treasurer any access to that information. That's really, that's not acceptable.
That's where my questioning came in, because in that financial reporting document that we had, we were requesting it monthly or share of the first. Draft, so I didn't know if we could make it quarterly or if that. You know, Cheryl wouldn't approve of that.
That's a, uh, cap and hours scheduling, right?
Yeah, that's right, that's.
Oh, but we want it monthly, they want to do it together, we just.
Right. I was trying to bring that up, I didn't, couldn't read their faces then, you know, when I brought that up at the, you know, it was kind of no reaction, I think they wanted it. But I, I don't see why we can't request that, and so. Wrapping that up, maybe that's something we can try for, you know, the document as a compromise, you know, as quarterly seems fair. Just so we get an idea of, we understand certain things can't be spent till certain times of the year, kind of like with the town with the roads or something, but.
So, so there was no resolution.
No, there was kind of not a reaction to the compromise, you know, and I was just kind of throwing it out there. Instead of once a year, at the end of the year, it's kind of tough.
But their lawyer, Ben, did say that this Freedom of Information, they would request that and they're.
Yeah, my idea is either they're doing it monthly. And they should, therefore it shouldn't be too complicated to get it to us.
That's right.
Or they're not doing it monthly and they're not doing it through that. I'm just gonna state that for the record.
No, that's good to have.
They're not reviewing and consolidating and they're just kind of finances on a monthly basis, you're not really doing it in town. I don't know how much extra work, but we maybe get some of the data over to the town, uh, but, you know, doesn't seem to be that much, but, uh, uh, okay. So.
I think that's my third.
Maybe there is a. You know, maybe there is a compromise that could work for everybody, um, I know personally, I I think it's probably more control issue. And I don't, you know, I understand what their concerns are, you know, but, um. That's, that's kind of good.
But at the end of the day. The town charter. Gives me the legal obligation, the legal right. To ask any agency or or committee for information and they're obligated to provide. And they just refuse. I mean, that to me is the. You know, as soon as I ask for it, it doesn't mean they have to give it to me instantaneously. But, I mean, they just don't involve me now for sixteen months. I mean, the last bit of financial information we got from the school was in July. Of twenty twenty-two. They have not provided a thing since then. And one of the reasons why that concerns me is, I mean. They're writing a check for, you know, a fairly big end of year check to do this paving. But are any of us sure? That they actually have the money to do that, and when they bought it from. That they actually have the money to do that? And when the audit comes out, is that going to be over? Um, then the answer is probably. Because the one fiscal control we have is we know exactly how much money we give them. Because all they have is what we, you know, transfer electronically to their checking account. So we have fiscal control. You know, and this, this was the one, one conversation I had with the auditor. You know, because part of what my job is as the town administrator and the finance director job slash treasurer. Is to maintain fiscal control and have fiscal controls in place. So nothing really stupid happens if you don't find out, you know, that somebody walked off with two million dollars.
Um. And and just to clarify, I mean, what I'm talking about, you know, and is that we don't want to. Get into the business about how much spending of money they're paying.
You made that clear.
Yeah, very clear.
Everyone's not. It's board of selectmen.
There's a very clear delineation of our responsibilities and it's their responsibility to send a.
Was all about. Yeah.
Right, but our our responsibility to ensure that, you know, that things are not. You know, guardrails on the place, if it's some degree, if there's not any major problems or.
Hmm.
I I don't approve of this town's, some of these, where the. Board of Finance had to approve additional money to the board of ed, I should say, had over. Or or something came up, maybe overspending, I don't know.
Yeah, it was, I know what you're talking about. It was a special land related expense.
Ah, okay.
And. What was interesting about that article is. Unless they have something funky in their town charter. That should not even be a board of finance. Believe it or not, by state law, it is the treasurer's responsibility. If they go to the treasurer with an unanticipated special education request. She has to pay it out if they don't have the budget to absorb in their own. But, you know, Cheryl's point is, how do I know that I have money to absorb that?
Yeah.
If I don't even know what they have? You know, that that's part of the reason why if you're actually. Have an ongoing financial basis and you're sitting down and and you have that accurate record and something happens. And a student walks in that needs really significant care and they've got an accurate quarter million dollar expenses you weren't anticipating. Which is very possible, um, you know, all of a sudden. You know, now. Now you have that awareness and and we are obligated to pay that out with that curse.
Yeah.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
One of the reasons.
Regardless of what you as a board of finance, they just. Um.
Okay. So anyway, you know, maybe maybe that's a separate, you know, working, working committee. I mean, if you if you consider that a Rob Shannon, then a working committee or a policy, maybe. Maybe there's some kind of separate proposal with somebody to make and work to. Become a separate solution, but to me, it's, you can't leave that on, on the, the. Uh, that's, that's a problem. And so we, I can't, we need to define, kind of, we just need the minimum amount of information.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know, that's kind of like, uh. Something I think we can't let go of this law.
And I think we did make it very clear that. Um. Neither the board of finance nor the board of selectmen. Has any oversight in how any of the school money gets spent.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
Other than interaction with the town for a capital project. Because of that, there has to be coordination with both entities.
Yeah, yeah, crystal clear on the charter and, yeah.
Right.
So that's an overview, lots of few things that have to be like sewn up, you know, and. And that's why I thought it was good to have tonight's meeting while it was fresh, you know, to kind of. Get it out there so we're all kind of reviewing and staying paged together as a group and then try to move forward, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I was gonna agree with you, but my question is. Does the school have to comply with the town charter or is there a fake? Thing that says that they only have to comply on a yearly basis, like, do they have a technical, the council, or are town charters that you must apply information monitoring? Or is there a fake thing to, you don't want it to go once a year, or the matter of how set, like, you just want it.
I don't, I don't either, that's that detail. It's what David does say and what Eric is saying, that the county, any town agency or department can request.
So there are certain things. The state law sets the minimum recording requirements, which they haven't met either, to be honest. Um. But that doesn't connect, it is a whole normal state. So for most things, a charter can override state law unless it's. The charter can make you do things in addition to state law. The state law kind of set the minimum bar. Um, but in our case. You know, it's not really well defined. I mean, it's definitely defined in the charter that they are an agency of the town. Of which, you know, they have disputed for a while, but I think. They're turning me fairly clear to them that that really wasn't the case and really required them.
Yeah.
Now, they do have some requirements to the state that are unique to education. And they have a lot of authority that no other department here has. So they're incredibly powerful agency with a really big mandate, which is the education of children.
Hmm.
Which is why they consume, you know, uh, the vast majority of the town's budget. Um, but the town can request information. For them, from them. And the, when you get away from just strictly education law, you look at the sections of state law. Which pertained to municipalities. The role of a town treasurer is clearly defined. And a town treasurer by state law is automatically the school district treasurer. So whether they like it or not, Cheryl is. The treasurer of A E S, she's not her business manager. Doesn't mean, but they really have no legal basis for denying her information. Um.
That's the part that's hard to understand. I think I would want that backup of someone of her knowledge and experience and looking over the records as a double check. That's what I find hard too, because it's not the control of how you spend it. Cheryl just wants, Cheryl has done this in other towns. She's a treasurer somewhere else. She has no problem working with the school district or. At least she gets the information she needs. So it's, that's the part that's hard for me to get a grip on, that is why you wouldn't want that, why you wouldn't want someone saying, well, this is good, you know, this looks good, you know. Uh, yeah, so that's where the whole, I mean, clearly where you're not going to solve it, but that's hard for me to understand where she's here as a part-time person. She just wants the information to, you know, keep it over rolling. See, yeah.
Right.
And so just let me ask you this last question. I feel like, did that letter that they cast out with the negativity, you know, the audit findings, that's why, in which we will get the report in November. They seem to think that with the establishment of their own checkbook and everything, that maybe. Am I reading it wrong? That that's where they think they don't need, they kept saying, well, look at this, look at this, you know, I feel like they feel like. Now that that's been done, they don't have to report to us.
So. I need to wrote that corrective action plan. Um, it's certainly not the first draft I wrote this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, by a little hard to part. Thought with the auditor and the draft I would have submitted for a corrective action plan. Probably would have gotten at least the board of finance or board of education's finances taken over by the state. Uh, uh. And maybe the towns too.
Hmm.
And the only way. Because the reality is they were not sharing the information. It is technically possible. To have our auditor do the financial statements. Okay, ordinarily, we share each role to do the financial statements for the town. And then those financial statements are audited by the auditor. I mean, essentially what we're doing is we are. Agreeing to supply two separate sets of documents to the auditor. And then the auditor will pay, the auditor essentially can merge these. Produce combined financial statements for the town. Um, and then audit on that basis. So. The treasurer. Technically. Has the ability to essentially subcontract, for lack of a better words.
Hmm.
So she can't allow the sub entity to submit those books independently. Which is essentially what I'm kind of fortunate to do with that corrective action.
Well, that's, that's.
Something she wants to do and it almost made her quit. It took me and the auditor calming her down and keeping her from quitting with that. But it was the only way I could see to do this, to not get our finances taken over by the state of Connecticut. Because we're not sharing information and we don't have transfer of information we came to enter.
So they are all connected, is what I'm saying, you know. I mean, like, because we haven't ever had the the meeting yet. With the auditor to understand all of that and then.
Sure.
I know that you sent us drafts and that's why this was the document that created the big hoopla at the beginning, which I think. Is part of the reason they feel they can be separate, right?
But, right.
And I, I don't want to make this long. I know we'll have a another long discussion, but it just fed right into what you're talking about.
Sure, and and what I would say is, think of this as two different things.
Mm-hmm.
The audit. Is final check and balance that occurs long after the spending occurs. Um, and then you have the day-to-day fiscal management and oversight.
Hmm.
So even if we as a town agree to, and we have. To essentially send the auditor two separate sets of books.
That's sense this level.
Combined, which is what the corrective action.
Right, sense, yes, okay, yeah, okay.
Even if we do that.
Hmm.
That doesn't mean you give up your responsibility. For the normal checks and balances.
Hmm.
And that's really what's allowing, what giving the information to them. I mean, realistically, every month. You should be getting financial statements from the town, financial statements from the school, reconciliation from the town, or reconciliation from the school. Check rather than through the both entities, or maybe you decide to do it quarterly and have just this one meeting a quarter of review. You know, whatever you're comfortable with at the board. Uh, you know, we as professionals should be supplying you with that information. Cheryl should be.
Yeah.
Cheryl should be giving, even if they're reconciling separately, which is fine. If they just gave the town that reconciliation data. And that's why in the original policy document, we had built in a delay. So we don't expect it right at the end of the month, right? We give you a month and a half to reconcile after that month's over. You know, sixty days later, or whatever the date you select, you know, then you have the information, uh, the reconciled information for both entities.
Okay, that ties it all together. Thank you, Eric, because I know this had a lot to do with why they were thinking that they were sending it. Now, yeah. Excellent.
Any discussion on that? I'm thinking more of time. Yeah. Okay, uh. I guess we'll move on to agenda eight and seven, to the approval of the meeting minutes, it's September twenty-seven and twenty-two.
I would actually ask that you not. Approve the meeting minutes because we know there's a couple errors in the meeting in these minutes. Um, and I want to get the verbiage right. Uh. It, it, it has to do with the actual motion that you made for the transfer of funds.
That was bright and.
One.
Money, yes.
Right.
We had, after a lengthy discussion, like the money was there for years and years and, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So let us come back to you, I would suggest that you table it and let us come back to you with the correct verbiage so you can approve it. You know, and I don't want to have that in.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh. But if you, we take no, no, I can take with the next one, yeah. All right, we'll move on to the agenda eight, administrative report.
Okay, I don't have a real long report, but I'll be honest, I'm kind of buried right now. What I am trying to do is I am trying to advance as many projects as I can in about the next six weeks before I can put my head down for the last season again. Um, so that's really been my singular focus. Um. We. Uh, put out an RFP. For the, uh, kind of design project. For a pathway between this location and the rail trail. Um, as part of, you know, the town that we're all planning for connectivity. Um, we got six proposals, um, the board of selectmen elected a three-person committee to review them. We're probably. Uh, going to do that and get that project going as soon as possible. That is a hundred percent. You know, funded, that's not any taxpayer dollars. The study is a hundred percent funded. Uh, the reason why we're really pushing this right now. Is because I'm trying to put together a grant application for a program called LOTSIP. Um, and I've been doing a lot of homework. Uh, including meeting with the staff, the. Uh, staff at CROG who actually administer that program and also with the, with the state DOT. Um, the reason why I'm pushing to do it this year is I think this will be the last LOTSIP submission for at least three years. Um, they've already said they're not anticipating one for the next year and they're probably not going to do one for the year after, because they will fully funded. Their funding pipeline for this program. So, um, either we get it in February or, you know, we're waiting about three years to try to fund it. So I'm, I'm really pushing, uh, on that one. Um, I think we stand a really good chance of getting it. Um, it should be, we should be able to put together a pretty strong grant application. And, you know, I've been meeting, you know, one-on-one with all the people that, uh, are the reviewers for this. Um, so I've been kind of doing my homework ahead of time to make sure. That I get their questions ahead of time so we can put a grant that addresses all their, their concerns. Um, so I'm trying to push that. I think I announced that the last meeting that we got the STEP grant. For the recreation fields. So we did get a half million dollar STEP grant.
Hmm.
Um, that will have to go to town meeting for approval. Because one of the things the state has been doing, most of their grants. Is requiring towns to have a significant amount of skin in the game. Um. You know, and it's funny that. None of the project documentation shows that as a requirement. But if you look at the projects that got funded through the STEP program this year, there wasn't a single one that got funded. That didn't have at least twenty percent town contribution to the overall project. So, um, it will require somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of town money to execute that. Um, but, you know, we're leveraging that by getting to spend a half million dollars in state money. So I think it's something that we can sell to the public, but we'll take a, a public meeting to do. Um. So, the great thing about the LOTSIP program. Um, and one of the reasons why I want to go after that is although the town, the, on the hook for the engineering. The actual cost of construction is a hundred percent grant funded if we get to that point. So, um, we still have that hanging when. And we should hear, hopefully in the next month. Whether we get the, uh, something called a TRIP grant. Which is another one I applied for. It's basically a, a grant to do lunch or burger. Um, and that would be a one point one million dollar. So.
And.
Um, so we've been. You know, very successful the last couple of years with grant writing, um. Our problem, and it's a good problem to have, is grants administration and being able to, and project administration.
That was my only thing when I said bringing that up is just getting us spread too thin with the pro, I love that we get grants and we get all those kind of things. It's just having the manpower to manage them all. We have the community building. Wherever, my, uh, you know, that too, that's going to be a big thing and just not getting overtaxed for a small town. Not, not tax, tax money, just over. Not getting over tasked for a small town, not, not taxed, taxed money, just overworked is the, you know what I mean? With, with you managing a lot of these projects, like you said before, breaking down, that's all, um, so.
We didn't advise quite the question here.
So I think, I think we're gonna have to start thinking about. Um. You know, some kind of additional resources for project management for the town. Whether it's volunteer or a position. But, you know. We've got. I mean. We've got a lot of money out there.
There's a lot of things, I know, even in the time that I've been on the board, I know a lot of things have come up, yeah.
You're right, and, you know, we're dealing with the roof leak over there, so that. I suspect a repair of that is gonna be under the threshold that, um. Frankly, I'm, I'm somewhat struggling to find him, cause it's the flat roof that's leaking. Um, finding, you know, I got one good commercial flat roof. You know, contractor that bidding on it. And I think it's, it's gonna be low enough that I can single bid that. Um, it knocks you around and I'd like to do that, just because it takes me a month to get them out here to look at it. And most of the other contractors, you know. You know, everybody's giving me. Project timelines in the spring and it's actually roof leak, so I'm, I'm trying to get on that one. Um, but you're right, I'm, I'm way behind in a bunch of projects and, and I admit that, and I don't. Um, it's a problem right now, cause I don't. I've been way too successful in getting money to do projects and now I gotta figure out how to actually build.
Well, the town has a lot going on, that's all, yeah, I mean, it's all good, so.
Good problem.
It is.
Figure out how to make it work.
Yeah.
Right. Um, that's all I got, uh. I'm starting to think. You know, I don't wanna think too deeply about budget season right now. Um, but I am starting to think about kind of the big picture of like what we're funding and why right now. Uh, present that to you and board of selectmen kind of before we start the formal budget. Process, um, because I think it's important to keep in mind, you know, kind of like what the big picture you're trying to do. And then derive a budget from that, obviously, there's a lot of little nuts and bolts things that, that come out of it.
We added a lot last year with the trucks and everything and plus if we're gonna have the mass, like you said, coming up with the grants and. Even though it doesn't sound like a lot, but a hundred grand here, a hundred grand there and funding for the trucks, we're already adding. We wanna bring on the A E S capital fund with funding a little bit, so.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot we're adding, so that's why we'll. That's it, I'm done.
Yeah, I think, uh. Yeah, and, and we're gonna have to start thinking about kind of how that building.
Hmm, that's what we need all those projects.
But the beginning of the next, next list from here, and we really need to be looking at a staff person to. To manage and start thinking about what programming that we want.
I think it's perfect for your secretary and a manager for that, like a full-time position, cause you've never rehired, right? Oh, sorry.
Right, yeah, we'll stick with our preview here.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you have other general questions to make.
Okay, any of the ASI reports, it's, it's Rob, it's C I P, um. I guess we have nothing to go to board of discussion, is there may have anything else to the board that we should talk about? It's the only thing I would mention is kind of follow on what Eric said, you know, I spoke about it earlier, but I, uh. We are coming up into budget preparation soon, so I think it's something for our next, uh. Uh, meeting, we'll have at least one of your board members I mentioned and, uh, Brian, I don't think you. But we've been through the budget season, yeah, too, yeah, so they're really part of it, you. Really not that much, but I think we wanna do what we can to settle the tone and, uh. Uh, you know, get. Uh, at the end of November, it's, it's the Wednesday after. Linda's term is up and she's not, she's not, uh, when I, yeah. That's why you were at the last meeting, you know, thank you for the. Yeah.
Right, cause there's three.
Yeah, there's three, there's three, uh, so Louise, Brian and Linda's. Terms are all up.
Hmm.
And, um. Yeah.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Is it, is not running, you're running, you're running?
So if everyone's back. For Linda's back, right? Yeah.
Um. Um, four of the subpositions are up this year and then the others, the other three will be on next year's. Um, it's, it's not running yet, we have a torn up. But it would be a good opportunity for us to kind of talk about the budget process and, and, uh, let's see, uh, what else we have. I suspect that we probably won't have the December meeting, it's in the middle of, it's currently scheduled for like. Eight, three, seven or something like that, it's just a. The week between Christmas and New Years, I personally will be out of town, I expect, so a couple of years. Um, but, you know, again, I think, I think we debated, debated on it. Uh, we're going to do the budget season. Anybody, anything else?
No.
Okay, there are none, and finally correspondence, uh, I have not received any correspondence, I didn't have that email from the. Community Act of Television, I'm hearing about the recordings, and I quote them on my, I'll call Eric, see if he has something that they may even use. That I've looked through well. Any others? You know? We don't have any members in the public to speak, so I guess we will move to the chairman. Okay, they'll move to the chairman, right, second, in seconds. Any discussion? All those favors, I. All those opposed, okay, and no extensions. Very good, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck, you know, there's a few running again.
Yes, good luck, that's for. I'm in favor of this hour.